This is a special meeting of the City Council being held for the purpose of organizing city government for the year 2025. At this time, I would ask our senior member, Councilor Conrad J. Prozynski, to assume the chair.
Thank you, Madam Clark. I now call upon Councilors Davis and Harvey to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
(inaudible)
Thank you. You may be seated. I now recognize Councilor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozynski. City of Salem in City Council, January 6, 2025, ordered that the City Council proceed to organize for 2025 by the election of a president, and I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Councilor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Masilo?
Yes.
Counselor Prozynski?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Motion passes, eleven to zero. I now recognize Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Prozynski. I have the great pleasure to nominate Counselor Prozynski to be President of the Council. I'm proud to nominate Counselor Conrad Prozynski to be Council President for 2025. When then-Salem Police Chief Mary Butler named Conrad Captain in 2016, she said his workers spoke clearly about the trust and confidence they had in his ability and integrity to represent their interests on their behalf, and that his leadership skills can definitely provide for team building. Conrad was elected Union Leader for almost his entire time in the department and was Vice President of the Superior Offices Association for 10 years. In 1993, he formed a Neighborhood Crime Watch group in every Salem neighborhood, and in October 1999, he received special recognition from the Mass House and Senate for these efforts. Also in 1993, he started the Salem Handicap Parking Program, which later evolved into the Salem Commission on Disabilities, and he received the Andrew Quinn Award for commitment and dedication to the disabled community. In 95, he initiated a SATV program called Behind the Badge, which focused primarily on community issues and concerns. Also in 1995, he implemented the Citizens Police Academy, supervised the program for 10 years with over 600 participants. I personally graduated from the program, made friends from Salem, many friends from Salem, and learned much. I recommend everyone who has time to do it, do it. He was a founding member of the Salem Children's Charity, which has raised so much money and awareness for children and their families in Salem. He served on the Governor's Hate Crime Task Force that Lenny Zechman founded to eradicate bias-motivated crime, and when Salem created the No Place for Hate Committee, he served as liaison for about 20 years. He was both the civil rights and LGBTQ liaison for the department. In 2011, I was a victim of the hate crime here in Salem, and was told by a family friend who ran Marbleheads No Place for Hate Committee that Salem had one, and the mayor's office constituent services director then, Megan Ackerman, asked if I would tell my story to the committee, which I did, and they immediately asked me to join the committee. I was elected chair, later that year, served as chair or co-chair for nine years. A few months after I spoke, Conrad asked me to come and meet with him in his office. Although we were constantly interrupted by his wife Julie urgently calling to make sure Conrad didn't forget to take the dog to the groomer, he told me that as police prosecutor, he wanted to bring my case to DA Blodgett. Although I'm not a victim anymore, it's had to express the fear I was experiencing. I was afraid of being in my own home, spending every night looking out the window with a baseball bat, clutched in my hand, not sure what I would do when he entered. Though I shared what happened with very few, those friends and family knew that they couldn't get me to a safe place mentally. Just in the couple of hours that Conrad and I spent together, I felt safe and supported. DA Blodgett took the case, it lasted 13 months, and very unusual Massachusetts resulted in guilty police for both felony threat to commit bodily harm and a hate crime. For a few years, I served informally as a victim's advocate, and the enhancements to the nondiscrimination ordinance in Salem in 2014, which included protections for gender identity, was spearheaded by our committee. And I spoke from the perspective of someone who had been victimized at the council hearings. Over the next few years, many reached out to me, and I tried to convince them that their case was best served by the police. Many, for obvious reasons, were apprehensive, even refused to call. So invited them to our meetings, told them that they could sit behind the camera, and that they should check out the old guy in the suit that was on the committee. If they felt uncomfortable enough to meet with him after one-on-one, just to tap their nose, 100% of the time they did, and Conrad met with them. Conversely, Conrad had asked me several times to meet with victims, and hopefully I was able to help them too. After the 2016 presidential election, our committee decided unanimously to start the process of trying to become a sanctuary city. I wrote the original ordinance on behalf of the committee. Then Council liaison Dave Epley and I formed a working group that was comprised of Mayor Driscoll, Alexander Pino Shields, Anunzia Lucy Cachado, Chief Butler, and Conrad Prozynski. Our committee was not afraid to talk about what was uncomfortable and other initiatives such as Indigenous People Day holiday, which emanated from our committee as well, that Counselor Mador put in front of the council. Our main focus, which Conrad promoted at our meetings and in the community, was to combat prejudice and for people to see each other as they are. Another example of this collaboration is that I'm monthly now as the City Council with the Transportation and Police Departments regarding traffic and parking issues in my ward, and Conrad usually joins me, especially when we meet on site. He's never undermined me with constituents and usually has thoughtful perspectives. Counselor Prozynski and I don't always vote the same, but we always walk out of the chamber as friends. We have so much to do in 2025, and though we won't always see the same past, we need to be able to listen to each other, especially when we differ, and perhaps at least find some common ground. It's important throughout, we don't make assumptions about each other. Again, I'm really proud to nominate Counselor Conrad Prozynski to be the President of our Council in 2025.
Thank you. I hear a second.
Second.
Are there any other further nominations? Councilor Stott.
Thank you, President Prozynski. I nominate Alice Merkel, and I ask my colleagues to join me in voting for Counselor Merkel for President for the upcoming year. In Council, Counselor Merkel has proven herself to be a calm, steady voice. She ensures that not just the council body, but the public watching understands what is being discussed and voting on. She is not afraid to learn, ask questions, and assist others. This was very evident in the last year, where she was Chair of the Administration and Finance Committee, a daunting committee, even for a seasoned counselor. But Counselor Merkel took on the challenge as she does anything else. Full steam ahead, willing to learn, share her knowledge, and lead the committee not with a gavel, but with mutual respect, understanding, and consensus. In our community, Counselor Merkel works tirelessly to listen and hear their challenges. She puts herself where the people are and invests her time and energy in countless community organizations, groups, and settings, but not as a voice to be heard, but as someone to talk to, empathize with, and help steer actual change. I do not believe that my role, our role as a council body, is to blindly enforce tradition and protect the unwritten barriers that were spoken long before us. As a body, our differences are what make us unique and what got us in these seats, and we have demonstrated our ability to work through those differences and find consensus while still holding true to our individual voices and our individual votes, all while continuing to move the city forward together. I am grateful that we can have these difficult conversations with respect towards one another, and I know that this will continue as we move into the new year. I look forward to a productive year on Council, a year where we will have many important issues in front of us to deliberate, and I know Counselor Merkel will do an outstanding job leading us through with the steady, calm voice, knowledgeable preparation she has demonstrated as A and F Chair this past year. Therefore, I'm respectfully asking my colleagues to join me in voting for Counselor Alice Merkel for President.
Thank you. I hear a second.
Second.
Counselor Davis, seconds. Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, I now recognize Counselor Jerslow.
Thank you, President Prozynski. I move that the nominations be closed.
All those in favor of closing the nominations? All those opposed? At the cameras. Madam Clark, please call the roll call vote. Counselors, please announce your nomination by name.
Counselor Cohen?
Counselor Prozynski.
Counselor Davis?
Counselor Merkel?
Counselor Hapworth?
Conrad Prozynski.
Counselor Harvey?
Conrad Prozynski.
Counselor Jerslow?
Counselor Prozynski.
Counselor Merkel?
Present.
Counselor Masilo?
Alice Merkel.
Counselor Prozynski.
Counselor Prozynski.
Counselor Stott?
Alice Merkel.
Counselor Varela?
Conrad Prozynski.
And Counselor Watson felt?
Present.
We have 11 members voting, six voting for Counselor Prozynski, three for Counselor Merkel, and two voted voting President. Counselor Prozynski is elected President for the year 2025. Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the vote be recorded as unanimous.
Counselor Hapworth moves the vote to be unanimous. All those in favor? All those opposed? The vote is now unanimous. Thank you. At this time that I think I'm supposed to say a little speech. I appreciate everybody's patience. I promise it won't be long. Thank you, Counselor Cohen, for your very kind words. Thank you, Counselors, for your votes of confidence. Thank you, Madam Clark, for organizing and coordinating this evening's event. Special thanks to my family and friends who have joined me here tonight and patiently supported me for these last five years. I would also like to thank those honored guests for taking the time out of their busy schedules to attend tonight. We have representing Senator Joan Lovely's office, is my friend Robert McCarthy, former counselor, former council president, former mayor. Representative Manny Cruz, District Attorney Paul Tucker. Mayor Dominic Pangallo, Chief Lucas Miller, former chief of police Mary Butler. Former counselors Josh Toriel, Lisa Peterson. School Superintendent Stevens Reich, and school committee members Gary Manning, A.J. Hoffman, Veronica Miranda, Beth Ann Canal. Our sheriff, Kevin Coppinger. Thank you. I can't forget the SATV staff. Oh, I'm sorry, Chief Eldion, I apologize. Fire chief. My apologies. And I apologize if I missed any other one else, but I'd also like to thank SATV for what they do here. Every council meeting, every committee meeting, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, and we on the council know how hard they work. Appreciate it. Part of my job and responsibility as Council President will be to continue to steer this ship. President Ty Hapworth is left in such great shape with a fine crew. In a direction that will continue to move Salem on a progressive yet responsible course that will enhance the quality of life for all our citizens without diluting our history, our culture, or our character. A welcoming community that creates equal sense of belonging, engages its residents in an authentic and transparent manner, where uniqueness is valued, respected, and supported through the opportunities we have created and will continue to create. We have challenges ahead and decisions to make on issues that will have a significant impact on our city. I am confident that this council, working with our mayor and city staff, will create more opportunities while continuing to enhance the quality of our lives. We have work to do now, let's get on with it. Thank you all. Now recognize Counselor Stott.
Thank you, President Prozynski. City of Salem in City Council, January 6, 2025, ordered that the rules and regulations of the City Council for the year 2024 be adopted as the rules and regulations for the year 2025, and that the same be suspended for this meeting, and they move for adoption.
Those in favor? All those opposed? Now recognize Counselor Watson felt.
Thank you, President Prozynski. City of Salem in City Council, January 6, 2025, ordered that His Honor, the mayor, be invited to address the members of the City Council at this session, and that J.D. Scrimger, Salem's poet laureate, recite the poem 1625, and I move for adoption.
All those in favor? All those opposed? At the cameras. Now recognize Counselor Watson felt.
Thank you, President Prozynski. City of Salem in City Council, January 6, 2025, ordered that His Honor, the mayor, be invited to address the members of the City Council at this session, and that J.D. Scrimger, Salem's poet laureate, recite the poem 1625, and I move for adoption.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Gary. It gives me great pleasure at this time to announce to you, the Honorable Mayor Dominic Pangallo, mayor of Salem, will address the City Council.
First, congratulations, President Prozynski. Counselors and school committee members, District Attorney Tucker, Sheriff Coppinger, Representative Cruz, former mayor McCarthy, city department heads, chiefs, Director Zric, as well as the staff in my office who have joined us, thank you all for being here this evening. Last year, we announced that starting this year, in 2025, Salem will be celebrating the artistry of the written and spoken word through a new honorary appointment, the City Poet Laureate. It gives me great pleasure to announce that Salem's first poet laureate is J.D. Scrimger. J.D. is an accomplished writer and is coordinator for creative writing at Salem State University. He's earned awards from the National Society for the Arts and Letters and the Academy of American Poets, and his work has been nominated for a Spoken Word Grammy. J.D. created and still directs the Salem Poetry Seminar, is a founding member of the Salem Writers Group, chairs the Salem Athenaeum Writers Committee, and is an executive board member of the Massachusetts Poetry Festival. Please join me in welcoming Salem's poet laureate, J.D. Scrimger, to share 1625.
First, let me congratulate the City of Salem for having a poet laureate. This is such a literary city that it deserves one, and then I want to thank the city for selecting me. It has special meaning to me because, some of you may know this, but my ancestor, Mary Town Easty, was actually put to death, accused of witchcraft here in this city back in 1692. And she's the one who wrote the petition that helped bring a stop to those trials. This poem is titled 1625. "Those who lived here called it what they called themselves, Nomkeg, the fishing place. The fish were huge back then, though back then, that was just what fish were. Almost no one spoke English. There were no petitions to stop the persecution, no ammunition bunkers on Winter Island. The immigrants hadn't yet chosen here, but they would, and in time, the wharves emerged, splayed fingers clutching the sea and its bounty. And then, the nation's first millionaire, first telephone, the founder of kindergarten. In 1625, there was no secret staircase, no gables, no toxins in the soil on the banks of North River, no cell phones, no drones. Looking backward, we can see what wasn't, and then what was, potions and wonders. In this city, unafraid of the undead, the popcorn at the Willows is still the best around, and the New Pier is a good place to fish." Thank you.
Thank you, J.D., and congratulations on your appointment to this role. I know that we're all looking forward to working with you over the months ahead. To my colleagues in public service and all who are with us this evening or watching at home, it's an honor to share with you an update on the state of our city, a place where the stories of our past are always present, where our future remains our own to write. Paraphrase slightly from Salem's 26th mayor, Robert Rantoul, "The year 2025, an unwritten page in the history of Salem, lies open before us. When it is closed, we shall have traced upon it something that will endure for good or ill to this ancient community." On the page prior, in 2024, we wrote about incredible achievements realized through a collaborative spirit, but also about efforts not yet complete, and that require an aligned vision from all of us to be a city that works for everyone. That means a city that functions with not just integrity, transparency, and competence, but also with compassion, one that recognizes that the challenges our residents face day to day, the cost of living and the cost of housing, the need for reliable and safe ways to get around, the right to great schools, and the challenge of contending with climate impacts like flooding and fires, these are all inextricably connected to the kind of city that we want to be. Despite what challenges the year ahead may bring, we're focused with intention on the important work and the transformative projects that we know our city needs, and on what it means to be a compassionate city. We must support one another, especially our most vulnerable neighbors. We've always been a city that welcomes everyone, and nothing will change that. Salem is and has been a place where we love and lift up our neighbors. No matter your means or where you come from, how long you've lived here, the language you speak, who you love, how you identify, your age or your ability, we're a stronger, better city because of that. Our commitment is for Salem to be a beacon, a city that works for and welcomes all, and that commitment is unwavering, no matter the tides. That commitment isn't new, of course, either. It was reflected in the work of this past year. This year gone by, we broke ground on projects that will create 185 new affordable housing units for Salem residents. But we know the need is far greater. One recent study found that Salem needs 2,200 new housing units over the coming decade to stabilize rents and prices. That sounds like a lot, but we've done it before. That's around the same number of new housing units built in Salem in the 1970s, and then again, the same number built in the 1980s. If Salem of the 1970s and Salem of the 1980s could achieve that benchmark, surely Salem of the 2020s can meet the moment now. So in the year to come, we'll work to advance other projects to right-size our community's housing supply. The price to pay if we don't take positive action on this is very real. Over the last five years, for every dollar that incomes went up in Salem, home prices went up by $9. And demand, especially for affordable units, is high. A recently completed 39-unit affordable housing building in Beverly drew over 950 applications. It's the most fundamental rule of economics. When demand is strong and supply is stagnant, prices go up. The consequences of this, perhaps best reflected in the story of a Salem resident who came into my office in 2024 and was helped by Lori Stewart, our housing stability coordinator. For privacy reasons, I'll call this woman Sandra. Sandra was born here and lived in Salem all her life. She put down roots, raised her family here. She worked hard in a good-paying office job, walking distance from her apartment, was looking forward to retiring in the next year. A few months ago, Sandra got word that the building her apartment was in had been sold, and the rent was going to go up by over 30%. So she came into our office to meet with Lori. The increase in her rent was a lot, more than she could afford, and it meant that more than 60% of her income would be going to her rent every month. Despite that increase, it wasn't enough to qualify Sandra for emergency status for public housing. Lori and Sandra checked on waiting lists and filled out applications, all to no avail. Sandra had a tough choice to make: stay in her unit and not be able to afford groceries or medications, go onto the streets until she found a place to live, or leave the city she grew up in and lived in all her life, possibly giving up her job just before achieving retirement. Ultimately, Sandra chose the third option. She found a unit, not ideal, still pricey, but affordable enough to last the year, just one city away in Lynn, so she can stay at work and get to retirement. But now she'll need to figure out transportation from Lynn to her job here in Salem. The office isn't close to a bus route, and Sandra doesn't own a car. For years, she walked to work, keeping a car off our streets, but now she may need to add one to them to keep her job and have a place to live. Sandra's parents made Salem their home. She went on to raise her own family here, too. She wanted to stay in Salem, but our community didn't have space for her. That should make us all furious. And Sandra isn't alone. In 2024, Lori helped over 700 Salem residents in crisis, many facing similar situations as Sandra's. Hundreds more have used Salem's Free Housing Stability Service, a program that we offer with the Essex County Bar Association. In 2024, for every five calls the mayor's office received from residents seeking help, two of them were about housing insecurity. To any who might think that Salem does not have a housing crisis, I invite you to spend a day, spend an hour, sitting next to Lori as she works with a seemingly unending stream of people, Salem people, in need. People who have lived here all their lives, people who have jobs, even people who have decent incomes, but just cannot find a place in Salem, people like Sandra. The day Sandra had to move out of Salem, the state of our city became poorer. In 2025, it's our responsibility to lose fewer Sandras. That's why this coming year, we'll tackle zoning that requires too much unused parking and new housing projects, and zoning that prohibits single occupancy housing. We'll advance a new ordinance to slow the pace of condo conversions, which last year alone permanently eliminated around 60 rental units in our community. We'll propose new financing mechanisms to invest in the city's own Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We'll look to new opportunities to leverage publicly owned and vacant land to create affordable housing. to add one to them to keep her job and have a place to live. Sandra's parents made Salem their home. She went on to raise her own family here, too. She wanted to stay in Salem, but our community didn't have space for her. That should make us all furious. And Sandra isn't alone. In 2024, Lori helped over 700 Salem residents in crisis, many facing similar situations as Sandra's. Hundreds more have used Salem's Free Housing Stability Service, a program that we offer with the Essex County Bar Association. In 2024, for every five calls the mayor's office received from residents seeking help, two of them were about housing insecurity. To any who might think that Salem does not have a housing crisis, I invite you to spend a day, spend an hour sitting next to Lori as she works with a seemingly unending stream of people, Salem people, in need. People who have lived here all their lives, people who have jobs, even people who have decent incomes, who just cannot find a place in Salem, people like Sandra. Day Sandra had to move out of Salem, the state of our city became poorer. In 2025, it's our responsibility to lose fewer Sandras. That's why this coming year, we'll tackle zoning that requires too much unused parking and new housing projects, and zoning that prohibits single occupancy housing. We'll advance a new ordinance to slow the pace of condo conversions, which last year alone permanently eliminated around 60 rental units in our community. We'll propose new financing mechanisms to invest in the city's own Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We'll look to new opportunities to leverage publicly owned and vacant land to create affordable housing. And we'll launch a new initiative to cut the red tape when it comes to our own internal process for reviewing housing projects. We're taking these steps not in despair, but because we're optimistic about the future of our city. The year ahead, we see challenges, but also possibilities. And some of the most exciting possibilities are embedded in Salem's schools. In 1854, Salem's ninth mayor, Joseph Andrews, observed the following. "The right of every person to the best education which a community can afford is now held to be a well-established right. Now to this grows the corresponding duty of providing the means. A schoolhouse is a better investment of the common fund than stocks or bonds, and ultimately will yield a better return. It is wiser to pay the teacher rather than the jailer or the keeper of the almshouse." Today, our mentality about education is a bit different. The spirit is largely unchanged. The most powerful and positive investment we can make in our future is in our kids. Today, Salem Public Schools are a model of a thriving district, where culture of achievement and high standards is proving to be successful for our kids. Across the 26 gateway cities in Massachusetts, when it comes to the number of accountability targets that the district has met or exceeded, Salem is now number one. In the Commonwealth, less than 15% of all public schools met or exceeded their targets, but here in Salem, 50% of them did. Not one of our schools is now in the bottom 10% of schools statewide, and all of them improve their accountability ranking compared to the state. Two of them, Salem High School and Bates Elementary School, did so with double-digit increases. Of the over 1,750 public schools in Massachusetts, the state only named 57 of them schools of recognition based on exceptional performance. Two of those 57 were Salem schools, Horace Mann Laboratory School and Salem High School. Speaking of Salem High School, it saw its most significant gains ever in all subjects. Across all three Salem High Schools, New Liberty, Salem Prep, and Salem High, the gains eclipsed pre-pandemic levels and were among the largest increases of the high school grades across the entire Commonwealth. On top of that, Salem's multilingual students outperformed the state in English proficiency. Among our multilingual second graders, the first class to go through our public pre-K partnership, a record number, more than seven in 10 of them achieved benchmarks, demonstrating the success of our innovative approach to early education here in Salem. We're also seeing more student enthusiasm to be in school when it comes to reducing chronic absenteeism, for example. Of the 26 gateway cities, Salem went from the bottom of the list, number 25 in 2019, to number three today. When kids are engaged and connected to their education, incredible things can happen. That's just one reason why Salem Public Schools enrollment has increased over the last four years by 166 students. While these achievements are worth celebrating, we still have work to do to ensure that every child reaches their academic potential. Despite the work still to be done, though, Salem Public Schools are without question moving in a positive direction, thanks to the dedication of our educators, the support of families and caregivers, and, most importantly, the commitment and hard work of our students. This work matters because a thriving city needs thriving schools. The reputation and strength of a community is directly related to the reputation and strength of its schools. That's why this year, this work will extend beyond the school walls and into our community. The year ahead, we'll relaunch the Salem Youth Commission and strengthen the work of the New Children's Cabinet, including building on the pre-K partnership that the Commonwealth is now using as a model for other communities. We'll also continue to advance the Salem High School Building Project, transformative opportunity for our community to leverage state funding and create a new school facility that will better serve Salem kids for decades to come. All of this and more is waiting to be written on that blank page of this year ahead. What we're doing to address transportation challenges, sustain the Salem skipper, advance the South Salem Train Station project, and create safer roadways. On that note, let's take a second to recognize that, while we've not had a traffic-related death in Salem in a year and a half, we still have lots more to do to achieve the goals of Vision Zero and implement Safe Streets for All. Also to be written on that page before us are our efforts to take on climate impacts, achieve the state's climate leader designation, move the offshore wind port project forward, and lessen our own contributions to the climate crisis. To invest in city infrastructure, sidewalks and streets and parks, last year, we planted nearly 300 city trees, started the new citywide sidewalk repair initiative, upgraded playgrounds, and leveraged historic federal funding opportunities to carry out major improvements to water and sewer systems. Those efforts must continue in the year to come. So, too, must our collective efforts to support job creation, entrepreneurship, small businesses, and economic vibrancy. All of this work is tied together by the idea of a more livable, more affordable city. A city where you can live in the community where you work and retire where you live, where we use the tools available to us to try to make it easier for folks. Two bucks to ride on a skipper anywhere in Salem, and now many places in Danvers and Beverly. Salem Power Choice, a shared electricity program that saved ratepayers nearly $22 million on their electric bills since we started it. Tracking down on wage theft and housing displacement, maximizing property tax breaks for our most vulnerable residents, including seniors and others living on fixed and limited incomes. We use these tools and more. It's why we launched Uplift Salem, our guaranteed basic income pilot, why we used ARPA funds to provide additional heating assistance to nearly 800 Salem families last year, why we're doing so again this winter. It's why we prioritize the professional management of city finances, which resulted this year in just a 1.8% increase in the median single-family tax bill, the lowest on the North Shore, as well as the affirmation of our city's historic bond rating and continued growth of our largest reserve funds ever. We know that far too many in Salem struggle to pay their bills, to afford the rising cost of basics like food and housing, or to save for the future. We're working to bring down the cost of living in Salem and to protect the economy, our workforce, and our community. That's what I hope that we can write together on that blank page of 2025, united in this cause, in the words of Charlotte Fortin, "With true hearts and purpose high." So that when this year has come to a close, as we turn the page to 2026, the city's 400th anniversary, we can each of us look back and say with confidence that we thoughtfully took on those cautions and wonders that J.D.'s poems spoke of, that we left our city more livable to those whom we have the privilege of representing, that we remain committed to the progress that we've already achieved, and that we made Salem a city that truly does work for everyone.
Thank you, Mayor Pangallo. I'll call upon Council Murcillo.
Thank you, President Proznowski. And again, congratulations on your presidency, and thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We have a meeting on Thursday that you're all invited to come to that one, too. And I now move for adjournment.
Council Murcillo moves for adjournment. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.